Can I have the motion to open a public session? Mr. Lamena, seconded by Mrs. Mamalito, all in favor, four, zero. Please stand for the pledge. And I'm going to ask that he stays there after the pledge for a moment of silence, just given today's tragedy in San Diego.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have the motion to approve the minutes of the meeting that occurred on October 17th, 2019? Mr. Lamena, seconded by Mrs. Mamalito, all in favor? All in favor? Four, zero. Dr. Bosser.
One of the portions of the public meetings that I most enjoy is when we have the opportunity to commend and recognize some outstanding students or staff members. And we certainly have an opportunity to do that tonight with some of our most outstanding students from John Glenn High School. To help us to do that, I would like to call upon our favorite high school principal, Mrs. Prinsen.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Bosser, District Administration, members of the Board of Education. Tonight, I have the distinct pleasure and opportunity to highlight three of our exceptional students from John Glenn High School for their achievements on the PSAT, which is also a National Merit Qualifying Test. The National Merit Qualifying Test selects those students who earn the highest index scores, which is calculated by doubling the sum of the reading, writing, language, and math test scores on the PSAT. Out of 1.6 million students who take the PSAT, approximately 34,000 earn a distinction as commended students. Our first commended student is Michael Brown. Michael, please join me at the podium. Just some brief remarks about Michael. Michael is a humble young man whose bright intellect and dedication have earned him recognition as Volga Rumselier Medalist and a National Merit Scholar. He is a member of the varsity soccer team, runs track, tutors his peers through the National Honor Society, and spends the rest of his free time volunteering with his church's youth group. In addition to all of this, he has dedicated a tremendous amount of his time studying, resulting in earning an overall average of 98.63. He will graduate with a New York State Advanced Regents Diploma with mastery in math and science. In addition, he is graduating with the highest distinction of Summa cum laude. It is my pleasure to recognize Michael for his outstanding accomplishments. Congratulations. Our next student is Matthew David. Matthew, please join me at the podium. Also, a very intelligent young man, Matthew has earned a GPA of a 98.25. He is a caring individual who has not only achieved National Merit Scholar, but is also a member of the Track and Field Program, National Honor Society, World Language Society, and Habitat for Humanity, just to name a few. Outside of our building, he can be seen helping others through volunteer work with his church's youth group and exercising his responsibility and leadership skills at his part-time job. He will also graduate with a New York State Advanced Regents Diploma with mastery in math and science. In addition, he will graduate with the highest distinction of Summa cum laude, and it is my pleasure to also recognize Matthew for his outstanding accomplishment. Congratulations. Our last, but not least, commended student is the lovely Katie Edwards. Katie, please join me at the podium. Katie is a young woman with a variety of interests and talents. As a major, she will be pursuing science with a focus on veterinary science. She is very bright, attaining an overall average of a 95.398. She will also graduate with a New York State Advanced Regents Diploma with honors in math and science. In addition, she will graduate with a distinction of magna cum laude. She is smart, witty, insightful, and many will even say that she's pretty funny. Katie is a freshman buddy, mentor, and a natural helper. Last spring, she was also one of two students who participated in the interview process for our school counselor and did a wonderful job. It is my pleasure to recognize Katie for her outstanding accomplishments. Congratulations. As one of three students who received this distinction at John Glenn High School, you do make us all incredibly proud. Congratulations on this well-deserved accomplishment. It is a true testament of your hard work and perseverance. You are commended for your excellent performance on the PSAT. You are among 34,000 commended students nationwide who have shown exceptional academic promise, and your performance on this test throughout, and your academics throughout your high school career is a credit to you, your parents, and John Glenn High School. Congratulations to you all. It is also my pleasure to recognize the class of 2020 as soliditorian and valedictorian. Beginning again with our soliditorian, who was just previously recognized as a commended student, it is my pleasure to present to you Mr. Michael Brown. And finally, it is my pleasure to present to you the class of 2020s valedictorian, having earned a weighted GPA of 98.8636, Mr. Matthew McNeary. And since I said a few brief words about Michael, allow me to indulge. In addition to being a bright young man, Matthew is a natural-born leader. His good humor, patience, kindness, and intelligence lent to his interest and ability to step into several positions at John Glenn High School. Matthew is the law school president, a member of the shared decision-making committee, and the president of the mock trial team. He has been a member of the marching band, jazz bands, and concert band for the past four years. He serves as the band's leadership council, is the drum major of the marching bands, and played saxophone and piano as part of the pit in the last two school musical productions. Matthew's achievements are a result of his planning, hard work, dedication, sacrifice, and commitment. Congratulations on this great accomplishment, and I look forward to celebrating both of you at the many celebratory events throughout the year. Congratulations.
We're just going to skip right to that. All right, one, two, three. One more, one, two, three. So congratulations to all of those students. I think one of the nicest things about being a board member is to be able to see so many of our students tapping into their gifts and abilities and succeeding and showing off their talents. I especially enjoy it when it's things that I didn't do or I couldn't do, and that's the case with all of those students that we just recognized. So congratulations, welcome. And now we get to recognize another student, our all-school president, Mr. Zane Siddiqui, to give the update.
Good evening. I'm happy to be here once again, sharing all the wonderful news from John Glenn. The first marking period officially ended last Friday, sending us right into this busy and exciting time of year. To kick off the month, on November 1st, the seniors had their senior breakfast, where they came together to enjoy delicious bagels and refreshments and took their senior class photo. The noble knight title was passed down from Sarah Santos to Kimberly Barnes, our dedicated and well-deserving math teacher. The natural helpers trip was held on the weekend of November 2nd at a new and improved location, Camp DeWolfe. Nominated students spent an amazing weekend enhancing their already helpful skills through workshops and activities. In addition to strengthening impactful bonds among another, the natural helpers also discussed behavioral health issues, addressed how to handle sensitive situations with compassion, learned how to recognize situations which require professional helping resources, and were challenged to break down any existing barriers such as stereotypes. Student council members attended the annual Compassion Without Borders Conference at Smithtown East on November 7th. The conference is sponsored by the Suffolk County High School Principals Association, and over 300 students from 35 Suffolk County high schools attended this year. Additionally, student leaders gathered in small randomized groups and engaged in workshops that are centered around community service and creating a culture of compassion, acceptance, tolerance, and positivity in school. A fun day was had by all. Grades for the first quarter will be posted on the weekend of November 15th, and schools will be closed November 28th and 29th for Thanksgiving break. The high school roadmap to college and career readiness, parent and student meeting began at 7:00 PM in the high school auditorium today. Juniors, sophomores, and even freshmen are welcome to attend. It's never too early to start paving the path for a successful future. Thank you so much for your time and attention, and I hope everyone has a happy and delicious Thanksgiving with their friends and family.
Zane, you were very economic with your words this evening. Thank you for the update and for always sharing the good news from around the district. That means it's my turn. Okay, I'm not going to be as economic, I apologize in advance. And we've had a lot of wonderful things happening around the district over the last few weeks since last we met with the board, and there are just a few good news items I want to share. One of the things I really appreciate about the Board of Education is that they are committed to the ongoing professional development of all the members of the district, from our instructional staff to our leadership team, as well as their own development. So we had a few of us that were able to attend some conferences and workshops, but we just want to get some brief reports out. Mrs. Mamalito and I attended the 100th Annual New York State School Boards Association Conference in Rochester a few weeks ago, which was a collection of representative of school boards from up to 734 of the districts represented in New York State. It was a great turnout, it was a very well-organized conference, the quality of the presentations that were made was really outstanding. The logistics of the conference, considering how many people were in attendance, really was amazing. For those of you that haven't spent any time in Rochester recently, it is somewhat of a depressed area since Kodak and Xerox and companies like that have closed their doors. And I think the life that the conference brought to the area was something that was really desperately needed and appreciated by all that were in attendance. Mrs. Mamalito represented the board, who made a conscious effort to decrease that line in the budget in reflection of some of the challenges we faced in this operating year. So Mrs. Mamalito was very busy representing the board, and I know you had a few thoughts you wanted to share about the conference.
So the conference was very well done. There's so much information that you can gain from these particular conferences, and I believe this is my third year that I have gone up, or fourth year? And even though they may have similar topics, the times change by the day, by the minute, by the hour. And I went to certain things, just to give you an update, I went to things regarding cybersecurity, which is at the forefront of the newspapers on a daily basis, building diverse teams through vision and mentoring, reducing stereotypes, promoting inclusivity, accepting and celebrating the LGBTQ student. We had an opportunity to sit with the chancellor and hear about what's going on up in Albany with the absence commissioner, and the turmoil with Board of Regents, and how they can start bettering relationships and making things function better up in the state. As we all know, there's very limited resources up there because of the lack of people employed up there. So it's just, we're in rough times right now. They are on a path, they're searching for the right people, it's a nationwide search. So, you know, we'll start figuring out what's going to start happening over the next few months. But it's just really, you know, we provide PD for teachers, for administrators, for everything that we do in a school district, and I find this so valuable because it teaches you how to be a better board member, how to not bring your own beliefs to the board table, to have better conversations when some of these topics are being discussed, because we're not immersed in within the school district, most of us, none of us are educators up here. So you can have a better conversation, you can engage in better dialogue, and just have, you know, more knowledge. So I think it's invaluable. I'm hoping that we can figure out a way to get everybody there. Dr. Bosser and I figured out a way to really find a way to eat without spending any money this time, there's always sponsored events, so there's always somewhere to find a free meal, so it's not a burden on the taxpayer. So next year's event is October 29th through the 31st in Manhattan, so I'm hoping, you know, we'll have more of a presence next year, and I think that it's well worthwhile.
You didn't comment that you missed the most valuable workshop at the event?
If I heard one more time about how fantastic Dr. Bossert and his trio was, their head almost didn't fit through the airplane door. I was listening to the chancellor, and I did not have an opportunity to see their presentation, but I heard it was fabulous.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Mamalito, and I agree. I also had the opportunity to attend workshops while not presenting, and the quality of the presentations that Ms. sorts through, there are a lot of people who proposed to conduct workshops at the conference and very few that are accepted to do so. So the quality of the instruction is really tremendous. Mrs. Marcus, with your permission, before we move on, this is typically the portion of the meeting where we invite our students who have been recognized to get home and do their homework if they elect to do so, and we neglected to do that, and I see them watching with a little interest of our conversation. So if any of our commended students or our all-school president would like to take this opportunity to exit, it is appropriate for you to do so. Your parents. Thank you again. While they're exiting, our assistant superintendent for business and our district clerk just last week had the opportunity to attend an annual conference that is held for business officials, district clerks, and other members of the leadership team in Saratoga, New York. And Ms. Dunkle and Ms. Genelli had the opportunity to attend the ASPA conference, and I know they wanted to share some brief thoughts and thank the board for encouraging their participation.
Thank you. I do want to say thank you to the board for continuing the support in professional development. I do want to say thank you to the board for continuing the support in professional development. It is invaluable, as Mrs. Malalito mentioned. And thank you both for looking for free meals while you wait. I'm sure the taxpayers and myself are both happy with the budget. I did the same at my conference. Had some dinners with some nice vendors, and didn't have to pay out of my own pocket, nor did the district. I was able to attend various workshops covering a variety of topics, for things that are in the business office, in the transportation, not transportation, technology office, and facilities, things on cybersecurity as well, student data, privacy, grants guidance, things like that. And I look forward to sharing much of what I have learned and the published documents that were given to me. I look forward to sharing with both my staff and the administrative team, so thank you.
I also like to thank Dr. Bossert and the board for supporting my professional development. I'll give you a brief list of some of the workshops I went to. I got to wind away an update on the open meetings law, the pre-hog information law, which is FOIL, parliamentary procedures, new education law updates, seminar, a couple of projects and how they affect the district clerk. And probably some of the most valuable sharing that I did was just sharing best practices with my colleagues across the state. That really was invaluable to me, so thank you.
Thank you both for representing the district and your positions so well in continuing your own development. But for the community and the board, the largest bulk of professional development that our faculty and staff enjoy does take place in-house. We have so many resident experts and so many leaders in our own field that we have a great deal to learn from one another and our local resources. And recently on Election Day, our curriculum team led by Dr. Hall put together just a marvelous day of learning within our district for all of our faculty and staff. And just to give the board a very brief overview of the successes, I'd like to call upon Dr. Hall.
Our superintendent's conference day was an exciting one. We led off with a keynote address from Dr. Howard Schneider from Stony Brook University. He is the founder of the School of Journalism, and he has now founded the News Literacy Institute. And his message was about the importance of students being able to vet information, and adults as well. And he taught us really about disinformation, disinformation, malinformation, and how important it is for us to be able to use multiple sources of information to ensure that what we are reading is accurate. And he really empowered our staff to think about information in a new way. He provided a follow-up session for our English and Social Studies teachers for the remainder of the day. We also had over 20 staff members, many of our administrators and our teachers provide training as well. Mr. Tranquino presented on cybersecurity to all of our staff. And many of our teachers attended workshops related to either the new standards or to behavior interventions. All of our staff experienced school climate equity work through our LICE team. And the feedback that we get through our surveys indicate that the staff found the day meaningful and that they appreciate the cohesiveness of the professional development that we offer in supporting with time and resources the things that we believe are important for our students.
And if I may, just publicly thank Dr. Hall and the team for putting together a tremendously valuable day. You know, it's, Dr. Hall's words, like planning a wedding for 450 people where you have to do both the catering and the music. And it really went off flawlessly. And I did overhear a number of our veteran teachers speaking at the conclusion of the day, and they cited it as the most valuable conference day they had experienced in their careers. So we really, the team went out of the park on Election Day. And I think the work that began will continue through this year and following years on some really important topics that the staff became really motivated and excited about. And our continued collaboration at Stony Brook University on the News Literacy, we're seeking to become what they refer to as a lighthouse district. And we began that work on Conference Day, and that work our staff is highly motivated to continue to help us to get that influx of curriculum into our classrooms. So it was really a tremendous day, and I thank Dr. Hall and the curriculum team and our principals who made it all happen. And thus concludes my superintendent's report.
Okay, we are to portion I of the agenda, which is the residence remarks. The board encourages all residents to attend its meetings, and this section of the agenda affords them the opportunity to speak. Persons wishing to speak should identify themselves in any organization who represented the meeting. Comments related to the district business or any agenda item should be kept as brief as possible and may not exceed three minutes. Questions or comments concerning matters which are not on the agenda will be taken under consideration and may be discontinued by the president. Public discussion of matters relating to staff, students, or others at which their reputations, privacy, or right to due process could be in some way violated or is prohibited.
Hi, my name is Pam Elbridge. I'm coming to the podium tonight to talk about the requirement of the HPV vaccine in order to go to school. I think it's really important that our schools and medicine stay separated and that the state doesn't take away our rights as parents, you know. There's, we as parents want to be able to do our own research on the vaccine and have our rights to be able to decide on what's right for our family. And I just want to also convey that I'm not against vaccines. I think vaccines are important, my daughter is vaccinated, but I want that right to be my right. Thank you.
Hello, Akapi Bo, representing myself. I was going to say exactly what Pam said. As a parent that does vaccinate, and we vaccinate for the HPV vaccine in our family, but I agree that I support if the board is going to vote tonight about sending a letter, like the Connetquat letter, I and my husband support that. As parents who have vaccinated our children with the HPV vaccine, I think it is a parent's right, and it's for all the reasons that you all know I support. If you do decide to write that letter, I would support you in that. And I also wanted to comment, this came to me this afternoon after the school shooting in California. I would like to publicly thank Dr. Savianza for the cultural arts presentations that she's been bringing to the middle school. I think that the middle school age group is where a lot of things can go wrong for people. And I think our leader here is bringing in a lot of programming and attention to these. I think the middle school administration sometimes gets a lot of criticism, and a lot of people rant that they didn't do this, they didn't do that. But from my parent perspective and as a volunteer in the community, I think our middle school is trying to do a lot of creative things, and they have been bringing in speakers and having programming with small groups and large groups. And I would just like to say publicly thank you to Dr. Savianza and her staff for what they're doing here. I notice a difference in the way my children speak and their language, so I just would like to say thank you for that.
I will make sure your thoughts are conveyed to Dr. Savianza, who will also have the ability to watch that video in a bad moment and then try to feel better about herself.
Do you have a chance, Alice? I just want to say something about similar to what they were saying about the HPV vaccine. I hope the board votes to send that letter. I'm not anti-vaccine principle, but I do believe in choice. Family's choice to choose themselves. And this is hopefully mostly you know, the religious and medical exemptions were taken away last year. This is kind of concerning because HPV is not spread through, it's not airborne or casual contact, sexual contact, so. It's clear which way the state wants to go with vaccinations, but I hope the letter goes forward based on family's choice. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Sarah Siddiqui, I'm a parent in the district. And I want to say a few words. I didn't come here to speak about the HPV vaccine, I actually came to, you know, with my son. As a parent, I agree 100%, HPV is a personal decision. I also want to clarify that this, the bill that I believe is being referenced has been in the Senate or in the New York State for many, many years. The American Academy of Pediatrics, which is our governing body, we also do not support mandating the HPV vaccine. So it is the Sub-Ethics Committee, which is one of the committees on the American Academy of Pediatrics, has discussed this previously. And we also support a parent's decision with this specific vaccine. While all pediatricians or the American Academy of Pediatrics and myself, we do encourage vaccinations, so thank you for being vaccinated. We don't support mandating this specific vaccine, HPV. So I just wanted to clarify that, so I hope that helps.
Anyone else think that's it? Okay, well, that will, since all the comments were related, that will segue nicely to the discussion item, which is just that. Tonight, we're going to discuss whether or not our district should participate in writing a letter, not matching, but similar slash inspired by the letter that was publicly posted by Connetquat School District, simply saying, you know, before it becomes law, we want to voice our objection to requiring the HPV vaccination to be one of the immunizations that are required to attend public school. You know, so that is a discussion that we can kick off. I'm happy to kick it off if somebody else would like to start making their comments first, you can let me know. Personally, my concern with it is what Mr. Youngs, I believe, Mr. Youngs mentioned, and actually what Dr. Siddiqui mentioned also. This bill has been floating around the New York Legislature for a long time. It's never gone anywhere, a lot of people think it won't go anywhere. But recently, there, one thing that has changed is the dropping of the religious exemption, which is, you know, you have to have founded beliefs as to why you want to do it. So now that's no longer an issue. So if the legislature believes that this is great for public health, there's really nothing holding them back from moving forward with it. And then basically mandating it and requiring it for all students to attend public school to get this vaccination. It's one way that they can vaccinate the children with something that they believe in. Now, as a school board member, my belief is that I represent the students in the district. I represent the families in the district. So if this were to be made law, we would have to abide by the law. And we would have to deny access to those families, to those children, who do not want to be vaccinated with HPV. Now, the current list of immunizations that are required for public school, which we're all very familiar with, they've been around for ages, correct? They're all communicable based on normal school day activities and interaction with children, right? So whether you agree or disagree with it, there is some logic to say we want to immunize students against things that they can really get contagiously in a classroom in a normal school day setting. The HPV vaccine, to me, which I am not in any way, nor do I want to, evaluate the effectiveness, the merit of the vaccine. It's well above my zero pay grade. But I can tell, which the letter outlines, that it is not transmitted in any way that would be taking place in a normal school day. It's only sexually transmitted, it's not airborne. You know, the letter outlines, which is one part of the letter that we do like, simply, you know, some people I'm sure have already read it, but, you know, you cannot get HPV from toilet seats, hugging or holding hands, swimming pools or hot tubs, sharing food or utensils, being unclean. You know, the normal school day activities of, you know, interacting, airborne, spittle, whatever you want to say, not washing hands, you know, that would be the unclean part. That doesn't apply here. So I wanted, and I do want, and I think it's an important discussion, our board to evaluate, if this becomes law, do we think that it is reasonable? Will we be content with having to enforce a law that requires this, that's not communicable in a normal school setting, of our students? Do we think that's reasonable? I will kick off the discussion and say, I don't think that that is reasonable. It's not at all a value judgment of the actual vaccine, or vaccinating your child in this way or not. I don't think that's it. The question is, it does affect us as a school because if it becomes law, we will have to preclude students who do not want this vaccine. And it does not affect the normal school day. So before it becomes law, I would like us to join in a letter-writing campaign and say, we object to it on these similar grounds. And other recommendation that I have, portions of this letter does evaluate the vaccine. I think that's inappropriate for a school board, that's not their purview. So I would suggest removing that, writing our own letter, largely inspired by this one from Connetquat, but removing any evaluation, determination of the merit of the vaccine. Not appropriate for a school board.
Okay, so I really, I don't, I believe in a parent's choice. And I concur with Becky and with Youngs and some of the other people have said that this is not something that you can contract in a normal environment in the school day. Nothing to do, again, with the vaccine, but you're limiting, and to me it's an issue of equity, you're denying somebody access to school that's really not a public health threat in, again, contagious, normal school day. So I feel like, once you go down that road, you create something, you know, that the state is now in control of a parent's right to decide. And that's where, you know, I'm like, I would, you know, I think it is appropriate for the school to, that's what we do, we advocate for students. The board is an extension of the community and the voice of the community. And that's where I feel, you know, we have that strength to do that. I mean, we've seen the letters that, you know, have come forward to the board, and my encouragement is that everybody, every individual voice should be heard. So it's not just that we do something if we choose to do it, it's that you as parents advocate. I always say that in local, the thing, that your local government affects you, and this is at a state level, but state and local government affects you so much more intimately than national politics. But yet we spend enormous amounts of time arguing about things that have very little effect to do on our daily lives, and something like this, you know, people tend not to have a lack of, they have a lack of interest. So I encourage your voice, but, you know, I feel like we are an extension of that voice.
Okay, so I'm having a major trouble with this one. My personal belief is nobody should tell us what to do with our children. That is my personal belief. However, I try not However, I try not to bring my personal beliefs to the table. We are a voice of the community. As of now, we have received 12 letters from the community. And so I start questioning, we had this whole issue of religious exemption, which came down in June. And we had 50 families that begged and pleaded for help, and how they, their child can continue to be educated. And we are required to uphold the law. So, and nobody fought for them, because my personal belief is that children should be vaccinated. I don't agree with all the vaccinations, but I didn't bring my personal belief to the table at that time either. So when you look at it from both perspectives, you have like a really hard time with this. I would not say that 12 voices are the voice of the community. I, I signed something against this bill. I have personally have done my own research and my own work and my own advocacy as a parent and a taxpayer and a resident. I would even open my home to anybody in this community to come, and I will spearhead a letter writing campaign and try to get everybody, I mean, Mrs. Crowley had done that for something else, she was very, very successful. I would be willing to do that. I'm struggling here with what our role is, because if this goes through and this becomes law, which I personally, wholeheartedly think that it will not, I mean, if the American Academy of Pediatrics is not supportive of this legislation, where is the legislature, legislature going with this? I mean, it's been hung up, there are so many other reasons. Hep B is sexually transmitted or by intravenous drugs, drug use, yet that is mandated for our children to attend school. Where were we for that? There's just, I feel like this letter in particular opens us up, there's such an exposure here. Another bill that's sitting in the committee is a mandated flu vaccine. So if we're going to sit here and say, well, you can't mandate us to take the HPV shot because it's not a communicable disease, well, that just opens a segue to say, well, we're going to mandate that everybody get the flu shot shot. And we know the efficacy of the flu shot. It's not great, but then we're going to mandate every child's, the percentages are on the lower end. And there's a lot of reactions from, from that particular shot. So are we opening ourselves up by putting something in writing, making a point about this being sexually transmitted in nature, and these are the reasons why, it shouldn't be on there, but then we're going to get the flu shot shoved down our throats? How are we going to defend that? And who is going to be okay with that, or not okay with that? And then where does it stop? So personally, I think we have, should have a choice. I'm not sure that this is the forum to be doing that. And I will welcome, and I will put it out there and ask everybody in this room to spread the word. I'm going to put a date on the calendar, and I will welcome every member of this community to come and do this personally. Because I think that's what we need to do. It shouldn't just be coming from five members of a board who's representing a voice, that we don't eat, we have 12 letters. So, yeah, I, I don't really know what to say about it, is that it is a real struggle. And I'm not sure that this is the proper forum.
So, you know, I personally support individuals' choice as parents relative to this vaccine, but I think I'm with Mrs. Mollito with respect to, is it the role of the board to write a letter, to take a position relative to this? And, you know, my stance relative to that is ultimately, we're bound by the law and we have to support the law. The administration is an extension, we hire the superintendent, the superintendent hires the staff and everyone in the building. Our job is to enforce the laws that are enacted by the legislature. And I feel like there are people at the legislative level, experts in the medical field, that's the forum in which they should be deciding whether this becomes law or not. Our job is to enforce whatever that law, whether it's adopted or not. I would encourage everyone individually to support their position with local legislatures, be vocal. I support parents' choice relative to this one. I just don't view it as the board's role to take a position on this, given the uncertainty of whether it does or doesn't become law, and then the position that we in the district are in, where we're required to support and enforce that law. So to me, it's much more about process and role than it is about the actual issue.
Will it be the board's role to enforce the law that becomes a law? Would that be the board's role to enforce the law when it becomes law? Yes, right, I heard you, I just heard you say that, right?
Yeah, my, my view is that the district is bound to do that, we're the governance body supporting the district. So if it becomes law, just like with the recent, the elimination of the religious exemption, we had no choice but to support what the legislature, the governing body of the state, enacted as well.
Exactly. So this will affect our role as a school board. So if we are looking down the pipeline and saying, it will be our role, if it, which is an if, if it becomes law, it will be our role to enforce that law. If we look at that and we say, is this a law that I will become, not I, we as a board, will be comfortable enforcing? Do we think it is a reasonable and logical law to enforce against our students? I do think it is very appropriate to take action in the form of a letter, elected to elected, right? We are not just volunteers sitting here, we are unpaid, but we are elected officials technically. So an elective body to another elective body that will be charged with enforcing those legislature's laws, if that is not a law that sits well with us, this is actually the time to object, so that we're not sitting here later saying, what did we do for those people? Maybe we didn't do anything, maybe that was wrong of us. There's a lot of times in our lives, personally, we can see it all throughout history, in huge ways and small ways, where if every time we said, we didn't do it in that case, so now I'm not going to do it in this case, I mean, we'd be totally apoplectic as a society. You know, that, that's a, that's a different mindset. You know, I, I think that I have the, I have a moral responsibility to represent the students and the people, I think we all do, that have elected us. And if this is going to be something that causes illogical, unreasonable hardship, then this is the time to jump into the discussion. That's my perspective.
And you're making an assumption, in my opinion, that you're representing the community. We've heard from 12 people, so I can confidently say that that is a strong representation of our community. I mean, it's like any other thing that we do.
I've never gotten 12 emails on an issue in my three years of being on the board. I also had, maybe this is a point of contention and it's not official communication, so I'll just say I had about 70 people reach out to me personally and supported the letter. But 12 emails alone, I had never had that amount. It's very small. You know, that's not, that's not the number of enthusiasm that's a lesson for people sitting in the audience and, and watching from home that do care about it. But I should point out that in three years, I've never gotten 12 emails on this issue.
Look, I, I respect your opinion, but I also feel that there are plenty of avenues for people to express their opinion and influence the ultimate decision that the legislature makes. It's not the only avenue of communication to go through the Board of Education. And I hear your passionate view relative to your opinion that the district should take a position, the board should take a position on this, based upon how we personally feel relative to it. There's plenty of issues, laws, every single day, that we are bound to enforce, that could question whether they're logical, right? I, I look at instances where the, the residents of a student, whether they're a legal resident in the district or not, puts us in compromised position, where your heart says, I want that kid to come to our school. Why does that kid need to leave our school? But legally, we're not allowed that person to come to the school. Why? Because our jobs as board and administration is to support the laws that are enacted by the legislature. And I think, I just feel confident that individuals have a voice and have multiple paths to communicate their opposition to the potential bill, the rationale for why they support it or don't support it. I just don't believe that we should put the district and the board in a position where we take a stand against this, and we could end up in a situation where the law is enacted and then we have to enforce it. I think that creates challenges. And if I felt there were no other avenue for people that were passionate about it to express themselves, maybe I would have a different opinion. I think those avenues are very viable, probably more constructive and productive than the school board taking a position. Yeah, that's my opinion.
So that's the discussion. I do want to just add one more thing. You know, I, I think it is odd to say that we would not like the outcome of something. We would be forced to enforce it, to comment with, you know, have a, have a doctor in our community, or a respected doctor in our community, with a respected association, say that the American Academy of Pediatrics does not support it, and to not simply tag our name onto it. And I know Mrs. Mollito volunteered to have a letter writing campaign out of her home, that is one option. But why, if we are doing that, would we not tack on a board letter? I think it's the end of the discussion. I know it's a matter of whether you find it appropriate or not. I, I want to close any doors.
I, I guess just in response to that, I would say, I think there's plenty of experts that are much better positioned than us to actually opine on this. I mean, effectively, we're writing a letter, just prepackaging other people's, other experts' views. Those experts are already involved in the debate, so I guess that's my perspective.
If, I guess my perspective is, if we don't think it's in the best interest of the student, then as a board, isn't that our responsibility to convey that? And does it, it doesn't have to be all inclusive, it doesn't have to be just us, them, if it's a collaborative. I think it's a number of voices that come across, let's say to New York State, it's not a law yet, and to say, hey, this is the time to advocate, that's what we do. And to say, you know what, it may become law, and when it becomes law, we have to abide by it and we have to follow the rules, but up until that point, I think our voice should be heard. I think it should be one of many voices. But we have a campaign with PTA, where we, if we feel that it's going to be harmful to our students, then I think it is our job to advocate for that.
And we should not get involved in any commentary on any law, or any proposed law, or any proposed action, because one day, we may have to enforce it. And that would be the logic on the other side of the discussion. Which I think is over. Does anybody have any other comments on it? I don't think we have a resolution that's clear, so I'm not going to call for a vote. But that is the end of the discussion for now.
I would publicly like to invite the community to my home on 12/4. I will slot out time from, let's call it 6:00 to 9:00 PM. If everybody can spread the word, my, my cell phone number is on the district calendar, my number is 631-774-2698. I'd be happy to share my address to any resident who would like to come join me. I will reach out to Nikki, if I can reach out to you, Agape. We'll set up like a text message and we'll try to have this go viral. And I would like to see a minimum of 1,000 letters written, and I want to really rally the troops and get everybody in. And I think that is more effective than five people saying that they're a representative of a community, that we're not really sure how a community really lies on this. I know the people that are here tonight and the 12 letters that we've received, but let's, let's, let's hit the boot, the ground, move in and boots on the ground.
Can I just ask you something? If you get 1,000 people that write individual letters, would that not be the voice of the community? I mean, that doesn't make any sense to me.
We have 10,000 registered voters.
Okay, but I'm just saying, but if you're saying, I'd like to see 1,000 get up there, again, it doesn't have to be all one way or another way.
I hear you, I hear what you're saying, you know? I'm struggling with this. The best way that I feel like I can deal with this without hearing, we haven't heard from the masses, without hearing from the masses, is for me to personally take charge, personally, and make it my responsibility to, to spread the word.
As a board, we don't speak individually, we speak collectively.
No, 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 but I'm, I'm creating another avenue.
So I think what you're doing is, you're speaking individually, and I think this would be something that if, if the voice wants to be heard, then the PTA is like we've done in the past. It's their charge, not an individual board members to invite people to their house to do this. I understand you're doing it as a parent, Heather, I get it, but you're changing the dynamic of the conversation.
And maybe this is the right forum to talk about what you want to do to invite everyone as a parent.
Look, I guess from my perspective, if 1,000 people were to write letters, then they've already voiced their opinion, right? They've made it clear, they've vocalized where they stand on the issue, and the legislators will have heard that. So, you know, to me, it gets, the fundamental question is, is it the board's role to take a position on this? And, you know, where I fall out is, at this point, no. I think individuals have every, when we're saying it's about individual choice, well, then every individual can exercise their choice to want to choose by communicating individually to their legislators what their view is. Whether that now becomes something that the board should take a position on, proactively, relative to a law that, you know, has been in the legislature for a decade and hasn't been enacted, that's where I'm not sure it's the right choice for the board to take a position on that, rather than allow individuals to continue to exercise their civic right to vocalize their opinion through all the channels that are available to them already.
Thanks. Now, our third end to the discussion, but I think it is the end of the discussion. Now, we would like to move on to shift gears and have Mrs. Hall, Dr. Hall, present her equity. If there is rumblings also, there will be a second resident remarks at the end, I don't know if people are interested in what's.
While Dr. Hall is positioning herself for the presentation, I would like to also acknowledge Mrs. Seelback, who I saw walk in at some point. Mrs. Seelback is also a member of our equity team and will be supporting portions of the presentation tonight. Dr. Hall is representing a large group of our faculty and administration who has really focused their efforts on making sure that each student in our district has the opportunity to reach his or her full potential. And in order to do that, we've had a targeted focus on equity within all of our school divisions on a K to 12 basis. Dr. Hall is taking lead on the work that we've done collaboratively with other districts within our region, and I asked to prepare a short presentation tonight to bring the board and community up to speed on some of our very successful efforts. Dr. Hall.
Thank you. Equity in education is a topic that is receiving national attention across schools and across colleges and universities. And it's about a belief that every student should have opportunity and access to high quality education. In Elwood, we have been devoting time and resources to building awareness about equity, culture, cultural responsiveness, school climate for several years now. So to start with the big picture, the U.S. Department of Education and the State Education Department are both promoting equity in education, and it's required in the Every Student Succeeds Act or the ESSA Act. In fact, school districts are assessed using ESSA, and there are nine indicators that they use to measure school success, and six of those indicators are around equity. Equity sometimes is a little bit hard to come to in a group, it's not exactly what it means because it touches on so many different things. So looking for a more specific definition, I would say that educational equity means that each child receives what he or she needs to develop to their full academic and social potential. potential. And the New York State Department of Education just recently released a framework for culturally responsive education. And this document encourages schools to look at this from four different perspectives. The first one is what they call welcoming and affirming environment. The second one is high expectations and rigorous education. The third one is an inclusive curriculum, and the fourth one is onboard professional development. And when you have a, a school setting that is focused on creating an equitable environment with a positive school climate, that is when more students can be successful and reach their full potential. So when we look here, right at Elwood, over the last 10 years, we can see that this conversation that's happening on a national basis about the change in demographics, it's happening on Long Island, the change in, in school demographics, it's happening right here in Elwood as well. This shows us our population over the last 10 years or two-year intervals. And what we see is that during this 10-year period, our overall enrollment declined 22% from 2,613 to 2,049. The greatest decrease has been the change in the number of white students enrolled in Elwood, which has declined down 12%. During this time, the Hispanic population in Elwood has increased 11%, and our economically disadvantaged student population has also increased by 8%. So understanding the cultural and socioeconomic identity of our students is something that benefits educators to be aware of, because these are the students in our classrooms who are walking through our doors. And different groups of students have different needs. So when we look at the equity work that's gone on in Elwood, it really goes back to 2012, '13 school year, specifically when we were cited for disproportionality by race, ethnicity, for identification of students in special education for speech. Then several years later, we were cited again for disproportionality for race, ethnicity, and how we were disciplining students, and the oversuspension of African-American boys in discipline. So that year, we had a group of educators participate with NYU Technical Assistance Program to begin a formal professional development about how to address the needs of all students and to avoid disproportionality. And on that team, we had Ms. Neer from the middle school, Ms. Barosi, Mrs. Jensen at the high school, Mrs. Seph, our school social worker, Mrs. Valley, our middle school sister principal, Mr. Cole from the high school, Mrs. Wilkinson, our executive director, and myself. And we attended several trainings with NYU on equity. And it's sensitive work. So when we started the training about learning about disproportionality and then how would we bring it back to Elwood, it really starts about asking individuals to think about their personal beliefs. And one of the first things they asked us to think about is whether or not we see color. Now, for, for example, for myself, I was taught, "I don't see color." That being, being a person who respects everyone, we're all equal, and I don't see color. What the training introduced to us is that if I don't see color, then I don't see the person in front of me. And that was a big change for us to understand. And so people felt, they felt awkward, or they felt that we were being told that we weren't doing something correctly. And that is what the difficulty of the work is, and the sensitive nature of the work, that if we can recognize that for each one of us who has a different culture, a different place, a different religion, a different ethnicity, a different socioeconomic status, if we can see the person in front of us, then we can recognize what their needs are. And so when we are given an assignment, when we're assigning homework, when we're assigning homework on a holiday of religious observance for which perhaps there's not many students, and now those students are going to have either something required at their place of worship, or their home will be full of relatives, but we've given them a major test the next day because it's a group that we were not aware of. That has an impact on that child's ability to come to school the next day and perform for that test. So this idea that we recognize each of us and we see who we are allows us to start to think about what's in each child's backpack. What do students need to be successful? So it is sensitive work that requires change, and we know that change can be difficult. And so our team first came back and started that initial work, going now four years ago. And there had been other equity work prior to this, but this is the work that I'm familiar with in the time that I have been here in the district. So our last three years, Dr. Bossert has focused on this theme of equity through our Super Tenors Conference Days. And our Super Tenors Conference Day set a theme that carried through the entire year. So when we go back to 17, 18, our theme was teaching the whole child. And in that year, we really started with building an awareness of what equity is, an introduction to it. And the following year, last year, our theme was mindfulness matters. And there we used mindfulness in two ways. We used it both a tool of mindfulness for self-regulation and for focus, to give students a tool for them to help them in their daily lives and help them perform, perform better. We also used that term mindful in relation to many, many things. Are we mindful of the different students in our school? Are we mindful of their needs? Are we mindful of how we instruct in our classrooms? Are we mindful of how our classrooms look? So then that went on to this year's message, which was, "All are welcome." And this year, what we're saying is that everyone is welcome in Elwood. All of our students, of all our different race, ethnicity, religious background, gender, all of our students are welcome here, and all of our staff are welcome here. And to do that, it means that we become cognizant of what is called culturally responsive teaching. So this work has really been focused in so many different ways. Some of the initiatives that support this work have been happening in Elwood for a long time, but they've all come together under the umbrella of equity. And so what I really want to celebrate this evening is the sustained focus that our building principles, our staff, our teachers have been engaged in now for several years. So if we look at the idea of equity, we have run courses, Dr. Tiscano, myself, we taught a course on equity inclusiveness three years ago. We have a team that I'll be talking about in a few minutes that goes to the Long Island Consortium for Equity and Excellence. We have, for two summers now, offered Spanish for educators. Miss Benjory, one of our high school teachers, has helped our teaching staff to get a basic understanding of some of the needs of some of our families and some things they can do in the classroom to support language acquisition. Dr. Tiscano began our cultural competency committee four years ago, and that work continues. And one of the things that they provide, for example, is prior to every holiday, an email is sent to all staff to give us an understanding of what students experience during that holiday. And we also have, of course, our conference days, our positive behavior intervention. Our social, emotional wellness is a big part of this, because school climate is a measure of equity, and school climate is impacted by how students feel about coming to school and if they want to be in school, and how they manage their own mental health needs. So we have character education programs, and it also brings in our PDAS. We've started our Mind Up mindfulness curriculum at our lower-level schools. We have yoga coming in through our PTAs, natural helpers, freshman buddies, all of these support the social, emotional wellness of our students. We also have our literacy initiatives such as academic vocabulary, strengthening grammar and academic vocabulary for all students, which is an underpinning of their ability to do their work. Our Teachers College Program has tremendously strengthened our reading and writing program. This year, we offered PSAT to all of our students in two grade levels in the high school, increasing their equity and access to that. And our nightly readers channel is something that came out of our LICE committee, and this is the opportunity for all of our students to hear a story, read aloud, and tell them. Because whether it's because people are working, or they're busy, or perhaps it's just not an option for them, we want every student who has access to a device to have access to a story. And Mr. Crinkino, if you could just click on that link for us real quick at the bottom? Yeah, no, the, the link, the nightly readers link, right there. Thank you. So the nightly reader is read-aloud stories. So if you take a look at the stories at the bottom, you can see that we have, we have some from, I believe, our first, Mrs. Marcus, you're up there, reading aloud one of your stories. I know Dr. Bossert is there, some of our teachers. And we have many videos that we will be releasing. We release one or two each week. We have one coming out very soon for Thanksgiving. But this is a great opportunity for students. There's actually even more, this is, this is not live to this week, I think we have, I think we've told six videos up so far. But we've got great feedback on this, that students enjoy listening to a story read aloud. Thank you, Mr. Crinkino. And next, in terms of a culturally responsive classroom, how do we build that is something that Seelback will be talking a little bit about, but it's really about resources in the room, the strategies that you use. We invited our teachers this year to do something called Reverse Role Call. So what's in a name? Do our names matter? Are our names our identity? Does it matter what our names are pronounced? So in our training, we're taught that yes, if students want to feel like they are welcome and they belong in school and that we want them here, pronouncing their name correctly is a really important first step. So the trainer just invited us to do a reverse role call. So rather than the teacher calling out the names, the professor calling out the names, let the students say their name, and the teacher needs to write it phonetically so that they start to pronounce it correctly. It's a measure of respect for children. And we received feedback on that as well, that I, I had a parent email, and teachers heard feedback about how students really appreciated that they, particularly students with a more difficult name to pronounce, did not have to go through the whole day hearing your name as pronounced or anything. And that, that is really how we create a place where all are welcome. So many wonderful things happening around equity. And just to tell you a little bit about LICE, so the Long Island Consortium for Equity and Excellence is from the University of Pennsylvania School of Education. It's sponsored through Eastern Subcoasties, I think there's 15 school districts participating in the group that we are in. And the idea is that by combining our resources, we can bring in national presenters that we would not otherwise have access to. So these are people who need work across the country. And every training that we've gone to has been incredibly powerful. Our first LICE team last year was Ms. Seelback, kindergarten teacher, Mrs. Ottley, fourth-grade teacher, Mrs. Kennedy, high school English teacher, Dr. Sapienza, Mrs. Porzinski, and myself. This year, we have the same team, we've added Mr. Bamidov, speaking teacher from the middle school, and we have added Dr. Tiscano, so we can, of course, a natural fit with the work that she's done with the cultural competency committee. And we've asked Mrs. Porzinski to take on another task this year, which is participating in the statewide conferences as we prepare for the changes in graduation requirements. So this year, she's doing LICE here within the district as opposed to going to Subcoasties. But at these workshops, you can see some of the titles there, "Schools Where All Students Thrive," "How Youth Participatory Action Research Can Foster Educational Equity." A very big title to say this, in a classroom where student voices are heard and where they have more opportunity, and it's not just a teacher voice, there's more equity in that classroom. In a building where teacher voices are respected and heard, and it's not just the principal or administrator voices, that building has a greater sense of equity. And in a school district where we invite all of our building level administrators, teachers, and staff to participate, for example, last year, we had every single staff member at our Super Tenors Conference Day, every single person with every single role. Those are, that's creating places for voices. And the more voices we have together, the more equitable our community becomes. So the next, the last thing really I want to show you is something that's really important to all for us as we work through developing our school climate, enhancing our school climate, enhancing our culture. And this is the continuum of cultural competency. And this is developed to help organizations and school districts get a sense of where they are and where they would work toward. So for example, the example I gave you when we first went to TACD was about cultural blindness. And you can see, again, there was a time when I know I was taught that that was near the end of the continuum. But this is teaching us that no, cultural blindness is not advancing equity in a school system. Because when you treat everyone the same, you only meet the needs of dominant groups. And that brings up the topic of privilege. Again, sensitive work, you are the privileged groups. So when we are analyzing, for example, our school climate data, which we did on Super Tenors Conference Day, and we're looking at which of the groups who scored the highest, repeatedly, repeatedly, we saw white males scored the highest in terms of their, their degree of satisfaction in the questions that we looked at. So there could be many reasons for that, but what we're asked to do is to notice, to think, and to talk. What, what do these things mean? And are there groups who create a privilege? So this helps us to engage in this work in a neutral way by framing it in research and helping our whole organization to move on. And I think when you go back to what Dr. Bossert calls my favorite slide, because I'm always rolling it out with all the faces, and you see the degree of initiatives that are happening in this district, I think there's a lot for us to be proud of in terms of the growth that we've had in creating opportunities for all. And I think what makes equity work powerful is that the goal of it is high achievement. The goal of it is that we continue to be an outstanding school district, one of the best school districts on Long Island, and that we make that a possibility for every one of our students. So when we have a conversation, for example, next month, when we're up to talk about our scores on region's exams and AP exams, we're, we're not saying, "Oh, there's a group that did not pass, or a group did not reach mastery." We're looking at who are those students who did not reach mastery, and what can we do to provide opportunities for them? And the first thing is for everyone to feel welcome. So I would just like to invite Ms. Seelback to come up for a few minutes and tell us a little bit about how this work has impacted her as a teacher, as one of our kindergarten teachers, and share with us a little bit about what this training has been with her.
Good evening. This is my second year attending the LICE training, and it's hard to put into words just how a few conferences have changed my life. I thought I'd be a good candidate because in my eyes, I thought I was a pretty equitable teacher with a liberal stance. And month after month, we were continuously challenged to step outside our comfort zone and look within ourselves. So I now see the world through a different lens. I've traded in a lot of my generic books and my teaching for more authentic learning. For example, in social studies, I used to read a book about a mouse who didn't like her name. And this year, I read a book about an Indian girl, Anjali, who grew up self-conscious about her name, but became very proud when she learned the origin. From there, I told the students just how lucky I felt when I learned the origin of their names. You could literally see the back stiffened with pride. I think about ways to celebrate our differences. Just two weeks ago, while counting to 10 in the calendar, I asked the students if they could count to 10 in a different language. Within moments, I had six students volunteer to count to 10 in different languages. So six students in a class of 22 in different languages, and stood up and celebrated that. So I think constantly about the literature I'm putting into my students' hands and the posters I hang up. My ongoing question is, do all of my students see themselves in this class? Do they feel safe and do they feel like they are part of the classroom? So this often spills over into conversations with other teachers and staff and my family and friends often. I wanted to thank the district for supporting this initiative and for staying consistent with this work and theme. By continuing this work, we have spread great dialogue and ideas to every single member of our Elwood community. I'm beyond fortunate to be a learner alongside the colleagues who have become my friends, and I look forward to this continued work.
Thank you, Ms. Seelback. And Ms. Seelback also, she led an initiative to help us identify more culturally diverse books. And one of the first things they taught us when we look at story, there's always a problem and a solution. If the problem is always experienced by a person who's not white, and if the solution is always provided by a person who is white, you are reinforcing a stereotype. And so we were asked to start looking at books and just be aware, just be aware of the books that you're selecting. And there's so many, there's so much rich literature that has been written by people of ethnicities. And so she helped identify books that we could bring in through our reading units, so that work is greatly appreciated. And all of our, all of our staff now, our faculty staff, have attended different elements of the training, and it's ongoing work. It's, we're really still at, we're in the middle of the, I think around the green to the blue, and we're working toward just creating conditions for student success. And so we want to close with a video that we created through LICE. I want to thank Dr. Tiscano because she saw this for a company in Japan, so she brought it to us to say, "This would be wonderful if it was Elwood." And then spontaneously, the group said, "We can do this. We can use our own Elwood faces to, to demonstrate this theme." And Ms. Parisi, the most, will actually compile the whole video for us, so we'll just take a moment to talk about we are Elwood. Is there music that you could play? Can you start that over, please? I'm sorry. We don't have a license.
It's actually still showing on the live screen, so the people at home can watch. We just can't see it here.
What happens if you press the button?
While he's doing that, I just want to share that I'm happy that Mrs. Seelback is here because from Superintendent's Conference Day, my favorite anecdote about the whole program happens, there's two, but my most favorite one, because it's so simple, is the name thing. I love learning how to pronounce a name correctly, and I love writing it down phonetically for a substitute. So when a substitute comes in, we're not butchering the names. So I love hearing that. That was my biggest takeaway, just the idea of something so simple that can make a world of difference.
Thank you, Dr. Hall. Does anybody have any comments or thoughts? Now we are up to the donations of Mrs. Mamalito can read those.
So there's a generous list of donations yet once again from many of the organizations and individuals that work really hard to make these things possible. We have $3,000 to support the purchase of books for the James H. Boyd Literacy Program. It's from the Elwood Booster Club. Thirty copies of Shouting at the Rain by Linda Mullaly Hunt to support the Visiting Authors Program at James H. Boyd Intermediate with a value of $357.60. Various Makerspace items to support James H. Boyd Makerspace Room with a value of $985.72. Then we have for the middle school PTA, $4,500 to support the purchase of fitness equipment for the new middle school fitness room. And then from Huntington Subaru and American Association for the Advancement of Science and the Subaru Loves Learning Initiative, 150 STEAM books with an approximate value of $3,000, and a Staples gift card in the amount of $1,000 for James H. Boyd Intermediate School. Once again, thank you all for your support and hard work.
Thank you very much. Now I'd like to have a motion to accept the consent agenda. Mr. Lemena, seconded by Mrs. Mamalito. Oh, that's right. I can't just say thank you over donations. Can't take the money in line. Can I have a vote to accept the donations? Mrs. Mamalito, seconded by Mrs. Weiss, all in favor, four to zero. Now we'd like to renew that motion to accept the consent agenda vote. Mrs. Mamalito, seconded by Mrs. Weiss, all in favor, four to zero. Yes?
I'd like to comment. Mrs. Weiss, about the consent agenda, as part of the consent agenda tonight, the board took a personnel action to award tenure to three outstanding members of our faculty, Ms. Chopey, Ms. McKay, Ms. Ralvan, a beloved ESL teacher, and two of our teacher assistants will have effective dates of tenure on December fourteenth, December eleventh, and December fourteenth, as written. And we congratulate those individuals on this milestone accomplishment and thank them for their contributions and continued contributions to our students. And we will celebrate them along with other anticipated tenure recipients at the June Board meeting.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Can I ask, comment one more thing from the consent, if that's possible, or no? Well, we did already accept it.
We accepted it. I just wanted an explanation. I guess I'm a part of a lot. We've talked previously about clubs and how we monitor clubs. In the consent agenda, Dr. Bossard, maybe you can explain this. We talked about the poetry, got rid of a club or the poetry. I just want, because you were, just to explain, you know, how we go about doing that.
Yeah. Part of the personnel actions was to rescind the advisors to the Poetry Club at John Bligh High School this year. Ms. Brzezinski, feel free to correct me if I'm inaccurate, but I understand that the advisors attempted to recruit the necessary participants from the student body to conduct the Poetry Club this year. They failed to recruit sufficient number of students to make it a club that we could support within the budget. So those positions are rescinded, and the monies that would have been paid and stipended through the advisors return to the co-curricular budget and can be repurposed for other activities as the year progresses.
So you're constantly looking and monitoring those clubs to make sure that they're viable.
Our building principals are charged with monitoring the regular attendance at clubs and making sure it meets our minimum requirements to continue to facilitate the club, which is why we have some variance between the co-curricular activities we offer for new year.
And sometimes it's just a culture change. Like, my understanding was the Poetry Club was a very popular club several years ago, and this year it's just not that way, but a couple of years from now, maybe.
I think they're getting enough value from poetry in the regular classes, that they didn't feel the need for the co-curricular activity. But I do feel comfortable sharing with the board that the co-curricular options at our middle school and high school remain vibrant, and there is certainly something for everyone who has an interest.
Exactly, and that's what we want to promote. Thank you, Dr. Bossard, for that explanation.
Certainly.
Okay, we are up to the first reading of a couple of policies. Are we going to put them up on the screen? Or, no, we just have our individual screens. We will look first at 5605, voter registration for students. Again, this is first read, discussion, if any, not voting on it. Does anybody have any comments or concerns on the voter registration for students? Dr. Bossard?
Yeah, this policy was vetted by the Policy Subcommittee comprised of Mrs. Marcus and Mrs. Weiss. The reason why it was held back is because we wanted it to coincide with the law that will be implemented on January first, which basically requires that there is some portion of the high school curriculum that advises eighteen-year-olds of their right to vote. This is another effort by the state to make sure we have greater voter participation and turnout. So in concert with the high school administration, we have worked out a system to make certain that our eighteen-year-old students are advised of their rights to vote and their ability to register to do so.
So just to clarify, it's a law that will be enacted in January, so we are timing this reading and adoption. Coincide either way.
That is correct.
Any other comments from the board on this? I don't know how to get out of this screen. All these questions. All right, the next proposed policy for the first read, again, not a vote, just a look over and a discussion. It's even very dry. Bossard, can you just address why it's going up?
Yes, and I will give a caveat as well. This is a unique policy in nature in that it speaks to penance that will be made for the different positions held within the district. The reason why this policy keeps coming before the board for revision is we have to keep up with minimum wage requirements in New York State, and we have some hourly positions that are scheduled to pay less than minimum wage. So we must, we ask the board to revise the policy to enable the administration to pay at least minimum wage to the people working in these hourly positions. That said, I'm not sure why we have this policy, because all of our other compensation rates are either articulated by contract or at the time the board passes resolution to appoint the individuals. So while I'm asking the board to authorize the revisions of this policy, I will likely bring this policy back at the reorganization meeting for abolishment, so we don't have to do this each time there's an adjustment to minimum wage, which, as we know, the target of $15 an hour has not yet been reached but is forthcoming. I don't need the board to revise the policy each time we have to change the rates. I think it would be best practice to simply eliminate the policy and appoint these hourly employees by resolution as we commonly do.
Or just have something that references minimum wage rather than the actual digits?
There may come a time where we want to outpace minimum wage, and then we will have to bring the policy back again. So no need for the board to rule on that tonight, but it's my intention to bring this policy at the July reorganization meeting for deletion.
Any other comments, questions, thoughts? We are up to our second resident's remarks. Everything that I said previously still applies, so I'm not going to repeat that. If anybody would like to make any remarks, please feel free to do so.
Hi, Ms. Agaby Bell. Second, I apologize, excuse my voice. Three things I wanted to comment on at the end of this meeting. First, thank you, Dr. Hall. I personally am always inspired and thankful every time I hear you present something. I feel like my children are in good hands with you in charge of curriculum. Like, I mean that from my heart, and that's why I go to curriculum meetings, and I'm always warmed, and I know that they're getting a good education with Dr. Hall planning our curriculum here. So thank you so much, and this was a very inspiring presentation you made about equity tonight. Speaking of someone with an odd name, I know how it feels to go through life with people mispronouncing your name and then giving up on correcting that.
That doesn't seem at all.
I know, right? I know. There was a plan with getting that last name. It wasn't by accident. My other two points, more seriously, about the HPV letter, I really didn't feel that strongly, but I'm surprised that you aren't voting to send a letter. I think the discussion was lively. I respect everyone's opinions and comments. I did not send a letter. I'm not one of those twelve people. I came here tonight and I mentioned that I think you should, I throw my opinion into those twelve, and I don't know if the other people who spoke were part of those twelve, but it's more than twelve people who support the board sending a letter. And I support most strongly what Debbie said, that this is the time in the process to advocate for the children of Elwood. And I don't know what harm it will do, and I didn't understand why there should be any hesitation. I understand that, like, you don't know if it does represent everyone, but I'm not sure with any topic, how an elected official can know, you know, what is the number where, okay, now I know it's the majority of the population. You can't ever know that. You just know the people who feel passionately enough to come on a Thursday night and/or send an email. So it lends us, the argument lends a slippery slope. When will you know? How will you know? We adopted a new policy last year with the holidays, right? So how did you know how many people and, you know, what is the number or percentage of the residents of Elwood where you know as a board that this is now, we can send this letter, everyone wants?
Agaby, just for some clarity, with respect to the religious holidays, right?
Yeah, just naming one number.
No, 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 we had petition, we had family, we had plenty of family members that came forward and asked for that. The reason why it was so clear to pass that in particular, and it was not maybe the majority of our community per se, the state extended the school year by three days to accommodate the Muslim and Hindu holidays. So when the state gives you three extra days in the school year to do that, how could we in good faith stick those three days anywhere else when we had a request from our community to respect diversity and diversity? I just want to make sure that that is clear.
No, no, that policy I am in support of. I think it's fine. I was just using it as an example of when do you know to make a change? And I think the calendar's great, so.
You just noticed a jump in logic. The same logic did not really apply tonight.
Right. The logic did not apply tonight. Like, I am not, you know, we did lose a lot of families with the religious exemption. Our, my children lost friends who, you know, it's, we vaccinate, but this, I think, there's enough support in the community for the board of ed who represents us to send an advocacy letter. Many other organizations, part of the PTA, which I'm a member of several units, part of the PTA's work is to advocate, not just fundraise. Send a letter, get seat belts on the school buses, you know? So as elected officials who are representing us, how, what is the number of, like, you know, what, next time it's going to be a different vaccine, then maybe I don't want my kids. That's how I'm thinking. My kids got this vaccine, but maybe the next one I won't want to do. I want to respect, I like the logic that this is not communicable on the school day, so why are they pushing this down our throat? I mean, or do you want to wait until it starts moving through the Senate and the, you know, if it starts to move? I don't understand the hesitation. I really didn't understand that.
Well, the first thing is that technically we're supposed to limit you to three minutes.
Oh, yes.
So we're waiting, sorry. And I don't want to let you keep talking just because I like what you're saying. Because that's not how we should be operating. But, you know, it is a reminder, your last comment before I cut you off, it's a reminder that what we did tonight is a discussion. I've heard from at least one member, I think one member thinks that it's never appropriate. One member, two members right here think that we should do it, and one member is concerned with numbers. So if this is, we never voted no, it was a discussion. So if this is something that people feel passionate about, bring the numbers, like any issue, if that is what the to-be-forth is. So it's not necessarily off the table. I don't know that we'll be discussing it much, but with anything... but with anything, when you are representative of government. If people are passionate about it, there's always ways to give the attention, right?
Thank you.
You could probably sit down and get back up and get another three minutes. In all honesty, thank you, Agaby. You're always very passionate, and you always bring your heart to your arguments, and I appreciate that, you all do. Agaby, has the PTA spearheaded anything like this yet?
No, I don't really care about this. But in the past, seatbelts on school buses, I know that was a PTA, New York City PTA brought that first, not the parents that did that.
PTA does have a list of advocacy that they, the topics that they ask their individual PTAs to put forward.
So, I'm just going to remind the board and the community of Robert's rules of order. At the portion for public comment, members of the community have three minutes in which to address the board. The appropriate response from the board is to the president of the board, who either responds herself or authorizes other members or the superintendent to do so. There is, Robert's rules written for a reason, that we are supposed to conduct our meeting, and I appreciate if everyone in attendance would respect that.
Good evening, President Marquez and Dr. Bossert, and this is the board. My name is Darlene Morgan, and I'm a concerned parent of Elwood School District, and my comment is regarding to the HPV vaccine. As an elected board that the Elwood School District or community voted on, I appreciate opinions that you all have given today, and has a lot of different perspective for me listening to you, but as a board that's supposed to be an advocate for our school district and for our children, and you were elected to take action on issues that directly concern our children, just taking back that this particular issue seems like we've chosen not to do anything. And as a board, maybe someone can clarify to me what your responsibility is as a board, to just discuss things or to take action?
Both, but we, as a board, we have to operate as a unit and one full board. There are four members tonight, one is absent again, but we are a five-member board, so in order to move on anything, it's like a motion, so we would always have to have a majority to move forward with anything. So, unless we are in agreement on any issue, on anything, three to two, or more than that, then we cannot do it. So, you know, there was no vote taken tonight, that was deliberate, because the consensus in my head after discussion was two to two, so that would not be moving anywhere, we would have to have three votes. So, that's what it was, it's just an open-ended thing now. But to move on anything, it's, sorry, to move on anything, we have to have at least three votes positive.
So, as a concerned parent, I would just like to say that I hope that this discussion will come back, and that as a board and advocate for our school district, that you will take action, because to me, just to sit back and not do anything seems to be a vote for what the state is trying to do.
With all due respect, I don't think a lack of action speaks to us supporting a law that hasn't even been enacted. It's something that's sitting with the legislature, that's being actively looked at, has been for a decade from my understanding, right? So, our lack of action tonight to decide to write a letter is by no means support for it. I think everybody on the board has articulated individual support for choice. The question, and I'm probably the most vocal one that maybe people are upset with, is about, is it the role of the board to take a position and write a letter, or is it more appropriate for individuals to exercise their civic responsibility and communicate in their own way? And we started the discussion, and there was no call for a vote. It's not that we didn't take a vote, there was no motion to even solicit a vote. So, from my perspective, discussion began. I encouraged the community, if people feel passionately about this and want us in elected positions to represent them in a bigger way, engage in the discussion. To be honest, at a board level, this really became relevant in the last three days with any velocity. So, I think we deserve the respect of, we haven't, inaction tonight has not represented in any way, shape, or form support for something that isn't law today, is, there's questions as to whether it's going to be enacted. We had some preliminary discussion based upon something that surfaced within the last seventy-two hours, and we've received a smattering of views from the community. So, my call to action to the community would be, if you don't think we're representing your views, and you want us to represent your views and your passion about this, communicate. That'll give us the best opportunity to reevaluate whether there is a different position that we should take.
Any other comments? You could just come to the podium.
I just wanted to comment regarding the holiday. I also admin for Concern Elwood Moms, and I don't know what was presented to the board, but what I saw on Concern Elwood Moms was an additional town was actually assisting in the compiling all of the signatures in order to petition our town to actually include the Muslim holidays. So, that may have been why it looked like a latter outreach. It looked like that that was what's getting additional assistance. And, you know, as far as on Concern Elwood Moms, there was about forty people that had commented before I shut off the comments, so I don't think people understood that they had to write a letter, but perhaps after this meeting they'll watch the video and they'll send in their letters. Thank you.
Hello, I am Michelle Marinat. I'm notoriously court-putted speaker. I, as the board members have noted, this issue only came to my attention within the past, let's say maybe forty-eight hours, even less than seventy-two, and I think that's probably true for many members of the community, so perhaps that is why there have been only twelve letters. I don't even know how, I know how I found out about it, but I don't know if there were other means in which it was communicated. And so, if anybody's listening, watching, if anybody has needs to get in touch with other members of the community, I would encourage them to do so. And I would also just say, with respect to all of our board members who made valid points, not all of which I agree with, but all of which I respect, I've heard a few reasons why we shouldn't write this letter, or why, I guess, you shouldn't write this letter, one of which was, you know, don't individual voices mean more than the voices of a board of five people? I don't know. I think maybe, as Mrs. Marquez noted, elected officials with elected official, you know, your standing as elected officials and respected members of our community and our representatives means a lot more than my letter as a mom. Two, I think it was noted that, you know, maybe we shouldn't write this letter because we think the law could pass, and then we have to enforce it. Isn't that a great reason to write the letter? Because we, maybe, sounds like all personally, and again, I understand the difference between personal and your role on the board, but we don't want it to pass. So, to Mrs. Weiss's point, now's the time for action. Now's the time to speak up. And then the third point is, is the board representing voices in the community, representing a quorum or consensus or a majority of the community, or are you advocates for things that you think are right for the students? Because ultimately, this affects them. And if we think personally, professionally, as elected representatives in any capacity that does its best for them, maybe that's what you got, your decisions. I don't really get a decision. Those are all mine. Thank you very much.
Nikki Crowley, a parent and Elwood community member. I just, I have a couple of questions that maybe you don't have the answer to, but you had mentioned that it's been in legislation for ten years. Why is it all of a sudden coming to the forefront? Why is it being discussed now? Are they looking to take action? Is there a reason that you think they're getting ready to vote on it, or?
I'll address it if anybody else wants to, if anyone can too. My, which is opinion of that is because now that that exemption is pulled, you know, yeah, the religious exemption is pulled, you know, that is actually like a firmly-held belief type of analysis that used to occur with that. So, there would not be any way out of it anymore where there could have been in the past. And so, I think, you know, seeing something, a vaccination tack on to the immunization list now requires a keener eye to what is being proposed to add to that list. So, like, the keener eye would look and say, does that make the same sense as the other list of immunizations? Does it pose the same risk to a student body? So, that's why I think it's coming up, I think that the concern is, let's not try to get this tacked on.
I would just say, recent changes cause people to think more change may come. If they were willing to change things based upon a religious exemption, are they going to make a different change here? And I think that's a valid concern, that because recency bias says there was a recent change, is there going to be more? So, I think that's caused people to be more sensitive to and aware of this issue, and potentially want to push back on it, which I think is valid, right? Whether that translates into any additional action, right?
So, so something prompted that a Quatt School District to write their own letter. I was just curious if there was something solid that made that they just took a preemptive action, with foresight seeing that there might be something coming to the forefront? Any knowledge that other school districts are doing the same thing besides that school district?
Dr. Bossert.
We know you're in the know.
I really don't. I can tell you that superintendents often will share letters that have been authored by their boards and sent out on behalf of the board. The only letter that I am currently aware on this issue was authored by the Connecticut Board.
And my last question is just, I understand, I think more clearly, like with your last statement, that, you know, how you feel about it as individuals, but I, in the beginning, I said some type of resignation about not wanting to do it. Is there a negative to not wanting to write a letter, or is there a, you know, something that would go on record and, right? Is that question clear? Is there a negative reason, or what's the resignation for?
I would not have an answer for that, because I don't think there is one, so, sure.
I'm happy to offer my perspective, it would be helpful. The question in my mind is, I'm not opposed specifically to this, the issue is, once you start choosing where you write a letter and where you don't, you're starting to exercise discretion, right? Do we write a letter about the religious exemptions? Do we write a letter about the religious holidays? Do we write a letter about, I could go back in time, and there's countless experiences where we didn't choose to write a letter, right? So, the question in my mind becomes, what is the catalyst for us to choose as a board to take a position on this? So, what I've articulated, much to the many people in the audience, is, I kind of feel like, if this is about individual choice, every member of our community has a forum to voice that. The question is, does the board have a role, and should the board take a role? Now, part of what I've heard today is people feel an absence of taking action on this is in some way us not supporting inclusiveness with students, or not protecting the fact that some student might not be able to be included. We can have continued discussion around that. I just think there's a slippery slope with respect to, where does the board start to choose to write a letter and not write a letter? And, you know, to be honest, I mean, that's a discussion I'm happy to engage in more. I just know there's countless examples where we haven't chosen to actually take a position and send on behalf of the board a position, you know, a letter. Now, that doesn't mean you shouldn't ever do it, maybe I'll get convinced that this is a place, right? I just, I think my bias is, there's kind of this quick motion to say, okay, somebody else wrote a letter, let's jump on writing a letter, and, because people are passionate about this distinct from other vaccines. Part of my reluctance is, I'm not a doctor. I kind of look at the comments I hear with the pediatric, or the American.
American Pediatric.
American Pediatric Academy has already opined on this. So, I look at it and I say, well, how is my, I don't have a medical degree, my medical perspective is not stronger than theirs. They've already taken the position to say, we think that this is different, and it's not communicable, and as a result falls into a different category, I'm not sure the letter from our Board of Education augments that discussion. So, to me, that's more what it's about, the procedural aspects of where we choose to write a letter and when we choose not to. And I think there's a long track of the issues where we haven't, and ones that we probably actually have more knowledge relative to those decisions, right? Writing about a tax cap and legislation on the tax gap, we live every day in the world of the financial demand exceeds supply of the school district. I feel a little bit uncomfortable, but I feel out of my depth with respect to, I think there's much more knowledgeable people that know much better the ins and outs of the differences of the nature of these illnesses and viruses and vaccines, and what can be communicate, you know, transferred how, right?
I guess, from what I gathered in your discussion, is that the American Pediatric Association has made a statement, and I guess the worry is that even though they have made that statement, legislators might choose to ignore it anyway. I guess that is my concern, but.
For the American Academy of Pediatrics to make a statement like that, and legislators to ignore that, it just seems unfathomable. On Dr. Bossert, in your legislative missions and, you know, the positions that you hold outside of here, have you heard of anything, is there any pulse on this anywhere? Like, there's any chance, glimpse of this actually happening, especially with the non-backing of the American Academy of Pediatrics? I mean, it doesn't get any bigger than that?
It doesn't make sense to me, too.
Right. Yes, go ahead.
Robert Trolls. I do sit on the Suffolk County Council Superintendent's Legislative Committee, and I am also on a committee for the New York State Superintendent's Legislative Board. So, yes, there has been some discussion on this issue. And we have counsel that represents the superintendent's counsel, and that person lobbies with legislature and has regular meetings with elected officials, who have shared with him that there is no chance in the world that the elected officials he corresponds with will have any support for this. The reference is made that would be poking a stick in the hornet's nest of those that oppose the ending to the religious exemption. It was pointed out that this bill has circulated for an extended period of time and has never gained traction or support, and now would probably be the least likely time for it to gain support and pass the law, because it would resurrect the very difficult conversations that emerged following the law that ended the religious exemption. So, the governing bodies of the Suffolk Superintendents and the New York State Council of Superintendent's have not taken a position on this issue, mostly in accordance with or in agreement with the position Mr. Lamanna has taken, is that it's not our discussion. This has been something where the Superintendent's Association has basically said, this is an item to be discussed within the medical field, is not under our authority. It also would represent a conflict if I were to put my name to a letter opposing a law and then later had to in foresight. So, I can tell you that there is no letter at this time for. So, I can tell you that there is no letter at this time forthcoming from either of those bodies.
Which is why it would be a board action versus an administrative action?
Correct. Board of Education has not asked me to participate in this letter if it should be written. You will note that the Connecticut letter that is circulating is not signed by the Superintendent of Schools, and to the board's credit, I appreciate the spirited discussion they're having. I admire the respectful debate that they're engaged in and the way they engage the community in the discussion, and I appreciate being left out of it.
It's different jobs. Any other comments? One more comment? You said you weren't a public speaker. Get your back up.
Suddenly, let students who are watching take note. Once you speak of once in class, you're more likely to speak of again, so there you go. I wanted to respond to two things that came up in the last bit of the discussion. Number one, saying that we shouldn't opine, looking at you with respect, we shouldn't opine, because we're not medical professionals, neither are the legislators in Albany, and they are seen fit to opine. And if, we certainly don't know more, I'm a major in history, I don't know more about medicine than a doctor, for sure. I might know more than a legislator, but I do know that I care more about my kid, and I think universally, all of us here, every one of us cares more about our kids than the kids in our district communally than folks in Albany to, you know, cast disparaging remarks about them when they're not here to defend themselves. And then, two, even though the American Academy of Pediatrics does know more about the scientific issues, I don't know that Albany cares more about them, because Albany cares about New York State voters, right? Like, people who pull the lever, color in the circle. And so, that's who we are, and that's who you represent. And then, also, this makes me wonder, in light of Dr. Hull's lovely presentation and thought-provoking presentation, that I'm going to think on for like a good while, you know, after tonight, thinking about all the times we haven't, and again, I'm not writing a letter, the board hasn't written letters? Maybe they should have, and it hasn't always been before you, but maybe we should bear that in mind going forward, and I appreciate that you said that that's something that could be discussed. Maybe we should have written a letter. You should have written a letter about the religious exemption. I don't know, but maybe. Maybe there have been other issues that there should have been letters, and maybe there should going forward. A valid point of discussion on this issue and others.
May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Mrs. Manalito seconded by Mrs. Weiss. All in favor, four to zero. Thank you for coming out. Thank you very much. Before your comments.